The Chair of Relief and Indication, Chief Administrator of the Office, Brian Crawford, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Almighty God, we come today with a thankful heart. Lord, we thank you for this time of year when everything seems to be getting green and blooming out. We see the beauty of your hand, God, in our community. I pray for those who, God, who need our compassion and our mercy, those who are less fortunate. I ask that you forgive us of our sins, guide and watch over and watch over this great city. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please face the flag, place your right hand over your heart and repeat in unison after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the robe?
Mr. Grasshopper?
Wait.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Present.
Mr. Corbin?
Present.
Mr. Lynch? Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Tomorrow, I will search too far and wide for a motion to approve the minutes of the Administrative Conference on Monday, February 27, 2017, and the City Council meeting Tuesday of February 28, 2017, and special meetings Monday, February 13, 2017, and Monday, February 27, 2017, and the Intergovernmental Committee meeting of March 3, 2017. Now for awards recognition, distinguished guests.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not using my system today, but I have a question. Is there a new reason why we have to have minutes for special meetings approved as part of our legislation?
The Chair refers that to the Council. Chief, how, Clerk?
We have to have minutes of all meetings.
Correct. So now we are now approving those at City Council meetings?
Special meetings. Special meeting of the City Council.
Okay, but like the intergovernmental meetings?
Um, I think it's probably necessary, but I'll get with the City Attorney on that.
I'm just trying to minimize all the extra work you have to do about maintaining these papers and documents and all the rest of it. Looking after your best interest.
We'll do it tomorrow.
Counselor, I just did that earlier when I was testing the new system. Okay. Really, I tried to cancel it and I guess that function's not up yet.
Okay, alright. Any other Councilmember that this time would like to be recognized? Seeing none, now Mayor Tyler?
I have no announcements and no recognitions today. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll go to reports. Mr. Gary Norman, I see none, no questions for crop standards. Seeing none, thank you. And Mr. Crawford, I believe we got here revenue and Mr. Bradford, the charity bond. Seeing no public hearing today, moving to adding legislation to the agenda of public comments and confirmations. Mr. Crawford, will there be any legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not from the Administration's side of the board as a...
We have one, allocating funds to specific not-for-profit organizations, funds budgeted and other charges in the Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund and otherwise providing with respect there to... Mr. Emerson may want to speak on that.
Yeah, this is, thank you, Art, this is the resolution that takes the recommendations from the Riverfront Committee that reviewed the request for civic appropriations. And so we are forwarding on that recommendation to the Council. And if you have any questions, let us know. We're trying to get it done in the interest of time. You know, this is a process that, we changed the process a little bit and it offset the calendar, and so these decisions are being made a little later in the year, so that's why we're adding it hopefully unanimously tomorrow so we can start to consider it because it's coming to us a little later than it used to. So we would appreciate your consideration of that. And if you have any questions, actually get a chance to take a look, just let us know. There's about four of us that are on that subcommittee, so I think most of us have heard the discussion, but for those of you who aren't on that committee, just let us know. Do we have the wrong names up front? While he's doing that, I will just mention, while we're talking about new, you know, other resolutions to be introduced, there is a chance I may offer one more to be introduced tomorrow unanimously. I know it's a light-headed thing, but this was at the request of some constituents and some neighboring communities regarding the bird chamber at Camp Mendon. If you'll recall, we did a resolution a couple of years ago when they were discussing how to remove the explosives that were at Camp Mendon. And just in a follow-up to that, I may offer something, just expressing our continued desire to make sure that explosives that are near our community are disposed of appropriately and that we don't have additional dangerous material coming through there.
Okay, you have no questions? Speak today, we have no confirmation. Tomorrow, let's continue the discussion.
Introduction, routine ordinances and resolutions under the consent agenda legislation. Resolution 49 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the March of Downs for the March for Babies. Resolution 50 authorizes a certain, use of certain equipment by Shreveport Green for the Great American Cleanup.
Okay, any questions? Discussion?
Okay. The adopted ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 34, adopting the Caddo Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Resolution 35 adopts the Systems Survey and Compliance Questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the State of Louisiana. Resolution 39 authorizes Mayor Ali S. Tyler to accept a donation of $13,500 of the Brits' Grocery Company for the City of Shreveport to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department and the Shreveport Fire Department as part of the Hero's Run. Resolution 41 suspends provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at 6614, a drive for a Cinco de Mayo celebration. Resolution 42 suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to Cultural Crush Week. Resolution 43 rejects bids received on IFB 17019 Hollywood and Singletary Area Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation, F-14006. Resolution 44 authorizes Sunflower Productions LLC as locations per the attached subdivision plat and legal description to connect to the water and sewer systems for the City of Shreveport. Resolution 45 authorizes the mayor to execute an act of release of a portion of a five-foot wide public utility easement in the Cottage Ridge Unit Number One, Phase Number Three Subdivision in Section 12, T-16 North and R-14 West. Resolution 46 suspends provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 62 and Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the sale, dispensing, and consumption of alcoholic beverages at Haste Pride in the Park Event. And Resolution 47 authorizes the mayor to dedicate the 1600 block of Easy Street in honor of Joe Willis.
Willis.
Willis, sorry about that. Added an extra letter in there. My mistake. Think I said that before, too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
These items, Resolution 34 through Resolution 47, we've done something different this time. We put all of these on the consent agenda. That's something we haven't done before. Please let us know whether you want them there or whether there are certain ones you want to take off. I think after a conversation with Mr. Emerson, we were trying to see if we could get more on the consent agenda, but this is within the discretion of the Council as to whether you want them there or not.
Any discussions with Council?
I have a couple.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
I have a couple that I would like to have in the riverfront. Over here, that's 43, 44, 45. I do have a question on 43. What's the, going to be the impact of that?
That was a bid that came in at 11.3 million and the budget was 9.5 million. We only had one bidder on that, and so we will re-advertise and hopefully have some additional companies that are interested in bidding on that.
Does it need to be reworked or...?
That's something that engineering will look at as well.
Okay.
To see if there's a way to get the pricing down and to attract more competition at maybe, maybe a little more competitive price as well.
Okay. Is that, it looks like this may be all in my district, maybe?
Yes, according to the engineer, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's still in my district this time of year.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, on Resolution 44 tomorrow, the Administration will ask that Resolution 44 be tabled to allow, will be tabled, allowing engineer to do some further research on that particular piece of legislation.
43 or 44?
44.
44.
Okay. We have a discussion. Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Regular agenda legislation, resolutions on second reading and final passage are which will require only one reading. Resolution 12 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and LRI Ventures LLC herein after called owner and acting herein through Judith Bruce, manager for the private water and sewer improvements for Elkins Subdivision Unit Three and related facilities. Resolution number 20, accepting dedication of Sugar Leaf Trail Right-of-Way and Blood Center Property Subdivision. Resolution 36, giving preliminary approval for the issuance of not exceeding $50 million of water and sewer revenue refunding bonds of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana for the purposes of refunding the city's obligations under a loan agreement relating to the issuance of Louisiana Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority Revenue Refunding Bonds, Shreveport Utility Systems Project Series 2005. Resolution 37, employing professionals with respect to the issuance of the City of Shreveport of not exceeding $50 million of refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the city's obligation under a loan agreement relating to the issue of LCBA Revenue Bonds, Shreveport Utility Systems Project Series 2005, and not exceeding $120 million of water and sewer revenue bonds for the purposes of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking, water, and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems of the city. Resolution 38 declares the intention of the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, issue water and sewer revenue bonds in multiple series in an aggregate amount not exceeding $120 million for the purposes of paying the cost of making additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking, water, and wastewater collections, treatment, and disposal systems of the city. Resolution 40 authorizes the mayor to execute a donation agreement between the City of Shreveport and Southern Estates LLC, herein after called owner and acting herein through Naveed Akhtar, manager for the private sewer improvements for Dunkin' Donuts. And Resolution 48 declares March 2017 as Women's History Month in the City of Shreveport.
Um, Councilmembers own number 12. I'm not going to be able to support that resolution authorizing that. Mayor, are you going to be able to support that?
No, sir. I cannot support that. I think that would be a cost to the city eventually, and I don't want to leave office and leave somebody else with a problem.
Okay.
And let me just explain why. Basically, this particular subdivision has water and sewer system that, that does meet our standards, but the streets themselves do not meet our standards. And if we have to go in there for water and sewer, repair, replacement, more than likely we'll have to tap some streets and it'll end up costing us more in the long run. And I'm saying to the staff going forward, I will not recommend that we take ownership of something that's going to be a potential liability to us later on.
Judge, let me ask something for just administrative. So if the Chair and the Mayor, neither are in favor of it, from an administrative standpoint, how does it get on our agenda? And I don't, and I'm not, but is it...
That's a good question.
I mean, administratively, and this isn't the first time, if somebody's not supporting an item on this agenda, it shouldn't get on here in the first place.
Let me, let me say this.
Yes, ma'am.
We did put it on the agenda because we were asked to do that and to give you all an opportunity to vote on it. So I don't mind that, but you know, I needed people to know on the front end, I can't support it because it's going to eventually be another asset that we own and we have to care for and we'll end up spending more, more funds trying to maintain it. So, but you know, when citizens come to us and ask us to do things, we try to accommodate them, but I, you know, I make it known on the front end. City Council has the last say on legislation, but when I don't support something, I will tell you I can't support it. Okay?
Okay. Good sir. Mr.?
Yes.
Okay. Clarification. The reason that Administration does not support this is because they are not dedicating water, sewer, and streets. The street is a sticking point?
The streets?
The street is the problem.
The street, the streets are the problem, yeah.
And when they develop, or beginning development of this, and we approved, I guess we didn't have to approve what they were doing because they're running the city limits.
No, it's privately owned.
Knowing how often this can occur, and knowing how much development continues in the area that I represent, I think we need to make sure that we're communicating on this properly because quite often a developer does not request to be annexed until we're far enough down the road that we have streets and water and sewer. And I can certainly name a number of developments in District B that we have the water and sewer and we don't have the streets. But we need to make sure that we don't get caught in this down the road because this is a major policy change.
Are they asking for the streets to come in? I don't think so.
They are not.
They are not. But it's common practice for developer in new developments to request to build the water and sewer to city standards and ask that we take them and withhold the streets. And if it's, if it's going to be our policy moving forward that it's all or none, then I think we need to make sure that's known before new developments, and that's going to involve working with the parish because I'm sure the original engineering was going to approve through the parish, not the city.
Well, and as a point of clarification from what I understood, you know, I think what you're saying is that it's an all-or-none situation. My understanding from what the Administration just said was not that they weren't supportive because the streets weren't being dedicated as well, or weren't being donated as well, but my understanding was that they were not supportive because the streets were not built to the right standards.
They were not.
Yes, so they're just not designed to the correct standards that allows for the infrastructure underneath them to be accessed and maintained in the way...
I understand that completely. My issue is, this very same thing can happen in, in a new development area where they intended to be annexed, and then we get to the point where they're ready to annex it and they find, they find out that we're not going to accept their water and sewer because we did not require them to build their streets to city standards.
Well, and let me, let me just respond to that. You know, and I, probably we've been doing this, I don't know, all the time, but this mayor is not going to recommend something that I think is going to potentially continue to be a problem for us. Now, this is a, this is a privately owned area, and, and that's why they bring it to you all, to the City Council. I don't get to vote, but I can certainly tell you why I can't support it. Now, it's up to you all if you all want to accept it, but I, I think you're asking for, I mean, one of the reasons the, the staff ask about the streets is because, and I think in all new development, they ask for them that the streets meet the standards. In this case, the streets don't meet the standards.
I, I have, I have no problem with this piece of legislation of where this is located. My problem and my concern is, if this is your new policy moving forward, then as we look at new development, anywhere in the city that, that there is an anticipation that it's going to be annexed, same situation as this, but not like this. Whether it's Long Lake or it's a new, it's a new subdivision that's just being developed, there have been instances recently where we have accepted water and sewer dedication, we have annexed it, and we've not accepted streets. So as, as developers come with a new plan, I want to be sure that they understand what's going on from the get-go. If they intend to be annexed, then they need to know before they ever break ground, long before that actually, that your streets have to be built to city standards, and will dedicate, will accept dedication of everything or will accept nothing.
Agreed.
And that's, and that's going to take some coordination with the parish in some instances because that development may start while it's out of the city limits, and then it becomes annexed later on. I, I understand this completely. It's not in the city limits, probably never going to be. I'm just talking about other new developments moving forward. This is a huge policy shift.
No, but I mean, we have several that fit this exact, in the city, like Shermond Place is an example of one where I'm pretty sure it's city limits, water and sewer, but not streets. Haven is another one where, and understand the rationale. I think your point is, as long as we're communicating it, that's going to manage expectations, and I think that's very reasonable and appropriate. Absolutely support it.
We'll communicate it from our office. I don't have anything to do with the parish, but we'll communicate it from our office as long as I'm mayor.
I'm asking you to communicate it with the parish, to communicate with the parish because many times the initial sign-off of this happens at the parish level.
But it really is MPC.
It's a combination of parish and city.
But it's really MPC is who, be the one that the developer approaches with a plan, and they're the ones that need to kind of just say, just, in my opinion, they're going to be the first direct contact.
That should be a consideration when they approve a site plan for a new development should be, or a PUD or a, you know, something through the Unified Development Code is that they should be, they should be running that through city engineering if the intention is to, you know, donate the infrastructure.
I agree, that's how it should work.
Yeah. And I was looking to see...
I don't want to give examples of how it does work.
Yeah, I was looking to see if there was somebody from the MPC in here. I don't see somebody from, from where I'm sitting right now.
I don't either. But certainly we will communicate with them. I just think that, you know, we've taken on so much, and now we're in the midst of a big consent decree, and we keep adding stuff that could be more expensive to the city than I, you know. So we'll communicate with them.
And Mr. Sweeney just walked in.
Mr. Sweeney, do you mind stepping up and answering the million-dollar question?
You're coming in at the end of a conversation that just happened, a very important, relevant one.
I told him you were in New York, so...
Do you want to go with me?
I do. I'll go with him.
I think you did. Mr. Sweeney, clear?
Yes, sir.
Since I am trying to go to New York, this is not the week to be traveling to New York because they've already canceled my flight. So this is a bad week to travel to New York.
Thank you.
But Mark, what we were talking about is, there was a discussion about a donation of some water and sewer infrastructure that the Administration and the Council isn't supportive of because the streets and some of the other part of the development aren't up to standard. And so one of the things that Councilman Corbin rightfully suggested is that we want to ensure that going forward, because a lot of these things start at the parish, they're not always coming through the city for permitting, and so we need to make sure that the parish or that the applicant understands, you know, what requirements are going to be in place if they're planning on donating this infrastructure to the city, then city engineering and the city needs to be consulted before they just make the assumption that we'll take the donation.
That is true.
Is that something that, that yells current policy?
Yes, sir. One of the things, I think you're aware of the fact that Robert Westerman has been contracted with by the parish to handle a lot of their issues as well. So when we, every, when we, every two weeks when we have this pre-application review process that addresses developments that include areas out in the parish, then if something is parish-related or a future development that is going to eventually be annexed into the city, it's oftentimes that's where the issue will come up. So we're trying to be more proactive about making certain both the parish as well as the city are aware of what that means in terms of future development. So yes, it's definitely something that is within the scope of what we're trying to do. In the case of an existing development where we've accepted water and sewer, we've not accepted streets, there's been no request that we accept streets, but that's an ongoing development. And as they continue to develop, they will come back again, stay, I'm sure, and want to proceed down the same path. How are we going to approach that with this new policy? And then, Mark, I'm not sure that's really directed at you. I think that's...
Sure.
To the mayor's side of the table.
Okay.
If we have, if we have an existing development where there are 150 homes and they're continuing to develop, and that development has not dedicated streets to the city, they have dedicated their water and sewer, and they're forging ahead, adding new homes, then how are we going to approach that? Are we going to tell that developer, you're finished, you can't do anything else unless you build it, build a new street standard? Or are we going to work with them? If our concern is where, is where the utilities lie in the right-of-way, are we going to change some design standard to require a wider right-of-way so that we don't have to accept the streets either? Because it kind of, it's counterintuitive if we don't want to accept water and sewer, but if they build the streets, now we'll not only take your water and sewer, we'll take your streets. I mean, infrastructure's infrastructure. But, but I see some scenarios in the very near future where this is going to be problematic.
Well, you know, I think, I think we, we would look at those scenarios individually, and if you already have a development where we've already accepted the water and sewer, that's a different scenario than this. I mean, this is an entirely different scenario. This one, we've not accepted anything. And so I think that's why it has to come...
And I'm not talking about this one. I'm talking about what you said is your new policy, the city's new policy, and trying to apply that to things that I know are going on in the city today. And, and I see that being an issue.
And I didn't, I mean, you used the word policy, Councilman Corbin. I never used the word policy. I said I could not support in the future going forward, us accepting water and sewer or whatever, because particularly water and sewer, if we're going to accept that with a new development and the streets are not up to standard, I can see that being a future liability and, you know, cost situation for the city. And that's just my, you know, that's, I, I didn't have to put it on the agenda, but we put it on there because the citizens asked us to do it. But going forward, I mean, I can't support it. I mean, you all, you, you make the legislation. I can only, I can only tell you what I support.
I don't think you're understanding what I'm asking.
I, I understand you.
I don't have a problem with this piece of legislation. We can take it off tomorrow, that's great.
Yes.
I'm talking about other developments that are in the city and are ongoing, and how are, how are we going to address those? And if we have a concern with damaging private streets, are we going to look at some other design factors, whether it be a wider right-of-way or different setbacks, whatever, whatever may solve that problem that allows development to continue? Because I'm not in favor of doing anything that's going to slow down, you know. That's, that's my concern. We can certainly, we can certainly chat about it offline later on.
We can.
One thing, just to, just to go into the mix, and I think part of it...
One thing, just to, just to go into the mix, and I think part of it is, as part of our job, the MPC, as well as with city engineering and public works, is to inform developers right up front, that if you're going to build a private development with private streets, a private infrastructure, be aware of the fact, and in so doing, you take the risk of when you build it substandard to the city and the parish's policies and requirements, that at some later date, you wish to be annexed into the city, then the city has a right to say no. Because the city's not here to bail out a developer who didn't do the right things right up front. Part of it is communication, and part of it is, one of the things that when we see a development that is private streets, that's one of the first things we tell them is, be aware of the fact, you're venturing into a territory where it may come back and financially be a loss to you, because if the city does not choose to annex, then you do not, you're not going to get what you want for your development. But I think what's happening is most, and I say this, most developers nowadays are savvy enough and aware of the fact that at some point, that if they're building something they want annexed into the city, that it's to their benefit to go ahead and spend the money to go to the full standards of the city. I know Robert tells people that all the time, that he's dealing with, and so, we're doing the same thing. I think a lot of the projects you see nowadays are ones that were built many years ago, and they've reached that critical tipping point where they need the city's infrastructure and services, and now they come asking for it. And so, you just have to make some really, those are some difficult judgment calls when it comes to costing the city. I know that you want to be as fiscally prudent and conservative and spend the taxpayers' money the right way. And so, we'll stand as staff members, trying to at least inform them that this is the pathway they're going is either the correct way or the wrong way.
I've got Councilwoman Lynch, I believe, who wanted to be direct.
Okay, so is this one street? Or is it?
One.
One street. What does the street look like now?
Oh, it's a garden.
What's it called, the site? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Chairman, maybe a question?
Yes.
Have there been communications with the owners of the development to look at refurbishing the streets, to bring it up? If we're going to go in and do it? Not to my knowledge, not this time. Is that an option there? Is that an option that they was communicated to? Because you're saying if you go in there, there may be some underlying infrastructure work that may compromise the street, and then they're going to want us to repair it?
Yes. If we tear it up, we'll have to re-tare it.
But I was wondering if there was a communication with those owners that, okay...
And I don't know, Mr. Westerman could probably tell us that. Would you like for him to come?
Well, I guess, but I'm asking, I'm going to support your and the council chair's notion that it's not in our interest to do this right now. But I was looking at either postponing to have a conversation, or go ahead and vote on it, that we want to accept it, and we do with it, and then if they want to do it, they come back again sometime later.
And that's a council decision.
I just want to give them opportunity to be holistic in this approach. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, any one answer?
Is this in the city limits or outside the city?
It's outside.
Okay, so we have a recommendation here from engineering.
Yeah, it's in the city limits.
In the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a recommendation from engineering to approve it. We don't want to approve it. Can I get an address, so I...
I'll be glad to take one.
All right.
It ain't good for you. All right, Ms. Trump.
Got to find a replacement. Here, introduction of resolutions, there are none, introduction of ordinances. And ordinance number 30 amends the 2017 capital improvements budget, that's for SporTran, making some adjustments to their capital improvements, as well as their operating funding. And as the companion, you'll see ordinance number 31 amending the 2017 budget funding contractual services provided to SporTran by Metro Management Association. There are no movement or increase in general fund contributions there, they're just moving some of the money that they currently have around to meet some brand guidelines.
Chair recommends Councilwoman Lynch.
Yes, I had a question back on resolution 20, I think maybe Mr. Westerman just gave you a thumbs up. Have we gotten any further on that? In terms of, just the Sugar League Blood Center? They say where they were two weeks ago?
I understand you're talking to Mark Swinney. They're a bit late before they issue a site plan to the city for review.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
You said on 31, the problem that you tested, this is technical...
Yeah, this is SporTran meeting some of their grant, their FTA funding requirements and moving money in the right place. It's within their current structure that they have, we're not giving them any more money. It's just moving some things around so they can take care of their business. And they're here, if you'd like to ask them any specific questions about it.
No, we're fine. And I want to, I'll do it later, I'll start thanking them for their community leading on, in my district, but we'll get to them later.
All right. Any other question? Ordinances?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance 25 amends the 2017 capital improvements budget for the airport, for a rotating beacon, that's $15,000 coming from, 100% funded from LADOTD. Ordinance number 26 amends the 2017 general fund budget, and that is the $3 million for the concrete tree from Elmwood and Juella that was broke about last council meeting. Ordinance number 27 amends the 2017 grant special revenue fund budget. Ordinance number 28 amends the 2017 water and sewer enterprise fund. Ordinance number 29 amends the 2017 general fund budget. And ordinance number 14 is a zoning ordinance, C-217, the ordinance amending chapter 106 of the code of ordinances, the city of Freeport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Elmwood Avenue, the Sugar League Trail, Freeport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R1D Urban One Family Residence District, and B3 Community Business District, to B2A Business Park District.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Thompson.
None to come off the table that we're aware of. We have the property standards appeals.
We do have one case, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Norman will be handling that. Okay.
I, by the way, got a chance to drive by this, and Ms. Bryant has been so kind to come back along this process, and while it has continued to look better and better, it is now reaching a point where you can see the hard work that they've been putting in is very visible lately, and it's a real honor, and where I am very thankful to them for all the work that they have done. The property that they undertook was in very difficult condition, but it's a very significant property, and their hard work's really paying off.
Good to take in this morning, property, property, places to see, they can be improved in SporTran.
New cameras, right? New cameras and new siding, right? Yeah. Do we have an original picture? I mean, it's, yeah. I mean, this thing has come a long way. It's a big property, and very historic. Does Ms. Bryant want to have a word? I see she's here.
Oh, I would like to.
Sure, tell us where you're at.
I'm Debbie Bryant, the owner of the Oakley Winter Mansion, or Florentine Club, 728 Austin Place, my address 9640 Jenny Avenue. And I think the Victorian has finally turned the corner. Basically, what y'all see, we have one side left on the main house to finish, which is where the scaffolding is, on the left-hand side, for new siding and replacement of wood rod. The front porch is will be opened once I get a permanent door there. I haven't picked out the historic door yet to go in there, so we can't open the front porch and finish that until I find the door. But, and then the turret, the coupla, will be the last project that we'll actually work on on the main house, because that's going to be very time-consuming. It's going to have to be completely rebuilt, and we'll have to run a lift for that, and it'll cost up to $1,000 for the month. So, when you're ready to do that, we've got to be ready. But, and then the very back addition that y'all saw, that's got a lot of the wood, it actually was an addition put on, on the house in the 1950s, and so, it's actually, I've got the permit, we're going to be tearing that down and rebuilding that. So, but because it wasn't the original part of the house, I've been really concentrating on trying to maintain this historic house and get it completely finished and dry, because that to me is the most important part of the project. So, again, we have a carpenter that works, one carpenter's done all this, three days a week, and he's worked very hard, and I'm very proud of the progress that we've accomplished in the last six months. The box, is what I called it, that was the addition put on the right-hand side of the house, never did really look like it belonged, and our windows are in finally, and so now it's all starting to come together with this new siding. So, I'm really excited about it, and I appreciate all of y'all's support. Hope y'all are as excited about the renovation as I am.
Oh, I certainly am. And I'm so thankful for your continued dedication to this project. When you got the house, I knew it, I mean, it's a big undertaking, and...
A lot of people ask me about it, so it's definitely a labor lot, and there's some frustration within it. When you get your windows, it takes, you know, six months to get them in, and four months later, you realize they're not built right, and they've got to go back to the plant. So, you know, but it's all worth it.
Oh, I'm so glad that it's coming back. It's a house that really was lucky to find an owner like you. So, we appreciate all that you do, and I'm happy to make whatever time allowances you need for the next, I mean, how long, Gary, do we, just want to say six months, or? Yeah, I'd move for a six-month extension.
Any discussion? Please go.
Oh, okay.
We're all at the ready to press whatever Bud brings out. We're anxious to push our...
There you go.
How come it comes up with already yes-selected? What, is he telling us how to vote?
Yeah. They're already letting us vote over here.
And that motion.
It did, but I think it's, I think that's a symbol of...
Yeah, because they know at an X. I'm sorry. You might do that. You know, if this building is designated historic site?
It is. I mean, it's listed as a contributing element. I don't know if it's listed as a freestanding, is it a freestanding historic site, or is it a contributing element in the district? I know it's one, if not both.
Sorry, do you? Okay.
I think it's listed.
I think it may be, yeah. And Debbie seems to be nodding, so I think that is the case. It's certainly, it's certainly, you know, under the protected historic status, like, so I don't know if it's, there are two ways it can be. It can either be freestanding or as part of the district, and I'm not sure which one it is, but it may be both. And at this time, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion and give an update on the next property standards appeals, that we had postponed until April 24th, but I actually already have a update on it, and I'm ready to make a motion on that. If it's appropriate to consider it, I have spoken to the owner, but I'm...
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Everton, this has been noticed under open meetings law, and it's postponed with a date, so it may be more appropriate to take it up on that given date, because you may have someone who chooses to speak in opposition who is not notified at that moment, taking it up today.
Can I make a motion to consider it sooner? And here's why. Let me give an update on what the situation is, and y'all maybe can then provide guidance as to what the best way to address it would be. So, just as a bit of background information, this is regarding 401 Spring Street, which is a property that came to us a few weeks ago. This is a historic building in downtown that's got a roof that's in a state of collapse. And we had asked the owner of that property, you know, he had expressed that he doesn't have the available resources at this time to fix the roof himself, and we had asked him to get with the Historic Preservation Commission and other, you know, interested partners who might be able to help him find an alternative. He has since then found a buyer to purchase the building, and the buyer is willing to replace the roof on that building. The contingency on the sale is that the buyer be granted enough time to hire his structural engineer and get the roof replaced. So, the motion ideally that I would like to make as soon as possible is that we grant a six-month extension with the, on the condition that the property changes hands, that the structural engineering report is submitted to property standards when it's completed, and the permits are pulled, and by the end of the six months, the plan is that the roof would be, that the building would be in compliance by the end of the six months. So, that's the request that I'd like to make. I don't know.
But I mean... Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Chairman.
May I see the discussion, but I mean, with the motion to reconsider the extended date being ordered, and re-schedule for the next extended year?
I think that may further complicate it. It's just a notice question. You've got a notice date on the agenda.
Move it up to the next agenda?
Yeah, you can move it up to the next agenda.
Okay. So, what, do I just need to make a motion to...
Yes, to set the matter for, what is it, East London? I'm sorry, no, 401 Spring Street, to the...
27.
The March 27 meeting day.
Then that is my motion, that we would consider that on March 27.
Motion by Councilman Everton, second by Councilwoman Lynch. Is there any discussion?
And we can re-notice it, correct? And if that'll have enough time.
Yes. Okay, please go. And that motion passed with seven minutes of interest. Next, do we have no ABO appeal?
No ABO appeals, Mr. Chairman. We do have one appeal, an MPC appeal, for tomorrow. It's Mr. Foster, Rome, 1557 Alcorn Street. I don't know if Mr. Swinney wants to discuss this, or if you want to hear from Mr. Swinney at this time.
Is Councilman only here from Mr. Swinney? Concerning this, any questions?
Yeah, could you present the background? I know this is...
Okay, sure. What I want to do is, because this is, this is a complicated case.
What would you say, Mark, I didn't hear?
It's a complicated case. It's all where I said, I'm, say that loud. I want to give you a copy of the board's initial knowledge of what's happened with this property, and why we got to where we got to. And why, if I don't tell you that statement makes any sense to you, and you'll wonder if I have more questions. So, what I want to do is, I'm going to kind of walk you through what's actually happened on this property, so you can understand how we got to where we did. And this, and I'm going to, first of all, Mr. Rome did receive, this is the beginning of the process, he received a driveway permit from the engineering department to pay a portion of the alley to be his driveway. He then began building a garage without being issued a permit. Number two... Number two, when notified of this, Mr. Rome applied for a permit which was reviewed on November the 23rd, 2015 by James Hurd of the MPC zoning inspections area. The permit allowed Mr. Rome to construct an 1,184 square foot garage addition. Now, Mr. Rome asserts that Reggie Mims, who no longer is an employee with the MPC, issued him a permit back on the 23rd of, of 2000, of November of 2015 with complete knowledge of the construction plans. And this date that the permit was issued was for a garage addition. However, Mr. Mims had never issued such a permit because he didn't have the authority to do so. And so that's, that was what was, Mr. Rome was saying he was given approval. Again, we don't have the right to issue permits from MPC. Okay, during the construction, MPC zoning administrator visited the site and alerted the city permits office that Mr. Rome had begun construction on a second story, which was not outlined in his permit. At this time, permits office alerted Mr. Rome that he would need to stop building until he received the okay from the MPC, at which time his permit could be modified. Mr. Rome never stopped building. Okay? That's an important point. Due to the small size of his lot and the nature of the floor plan, Mr. Rome was required to apply for a ZBA for special exception use for a secondary residential structure as well as a request for variances in lot size and rear yard setback. The total fee was $950 for this, okay? While this addition is connected to the primary residence on the site, it operates as a separate living unit. The secondary structure has its own kitchen, living area, bedrooms, bathrooms, garage, and separate entrance. Again, another point to bring to your attention, a minimum of 9,000 square feet is the required lot size for this zoning district of R1H. Mr. Rome only has 4,740 square feet. A 15-foot rear yard setback is required for this lot and Mr. Rome is requesting a variance of 10 feet. Okay, so let me bring you further up to date. During Mr. Rome's first ZBA meeting in January, the board voted to defer the case to the next meeting in February. Mr. Rome was required to submit four plans to the MPC staff of both the primary and secondary buildings to prove that they were integrated together and operated as one comprehensive living space. Again, at the request of Mr. Rome, the ZBA deferred this case because it had so many moving parts and was so complicated that we were getting conflicting statements about what the permit office had said to him, which we verified later on were not the same things that were told to him. In other words, permit office was always aware of the fact that he was not in compliance and was telling him that all along. Okay, so Mr. Rome delivered plans to the staff and then determined the floor plan confirmed that this would operate as two separate residences rather than one, and the MPC staff's recommendation of denial stood. So on the February MPC meeting, Mr. Rome failed to show up at all, even though he had asked for the deferral and for his case to be reconsidered by ZBA, he never showed up at the meeting. The ZBA then decided to vote this project down and not to allow him his variances or his secondary residences. Mr. Rome questioned his notification, but he was emailed and provided a staff report that we can advance. He was also followed up with further information reminding him about the February 15th meeting and again, did not, did not attend the meeting. I want you to understand that throughout this entire process, he has never stopped construction. And in fact, if you want to look at the actual way the building looks today, which is very different, I'm going to pass you around here, the structures that he, the actual building that he has actually completed. His current proposed layout, the way he has laid out right now is actually violates some of the setback requirements that he did not ask for in his ZBA application. And likewise, he's actually now, his building is extending over into the SWEPCO easement right away here. What I'm trying to say is this has been a comedy of errors and I just didn't want you to think that we just got here just by having this thing. So that's my explanation of where we are.
Just as a notice, Mr. Sweeney's going to have to present that again tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Well, I got to tell them. I'll start with the city attorney.
Yes.
There is not, this is, there's no criminal matter in this?
We're looking at that too.
I mean, because clearly there are some issues that it's way beyond whether we're approving this deal or not.
Yes. Ideally, it's civil, but of course, we're going to look at any of the misdemeanors that, you know, they're clearly permit violations and process violations, and so we're having to look to see if any of that will rise to the level.
Well, no, but I mean, it's not the point in that.
The point is, what is our insurance picture? Jim? Okay, so my next question is, has, have we heard anything from SWEPCO?
Not so far. I'm not certain they're completely aware of the fact that it's in their right of way or not, but not so far.
Right, and then is, is, has any of the neighbors or anybody complained about it?
The only neighbor that came forward was of concern was the church facility that owns property, adjacent to his property that would share that alleyway, and they were concerned that somehow their access off of the alley would be, would be terminated because he had paved over into the alleyway. And that was the only person that came up with some concern and expressed that, that they want to make sure that their property did not lose its full access.
And that church is pastor by brother of this parish.
Yes, that's true.
Mr. Johnson?
The city attorney is concerned that we don't get too far into this without having Mr. Rome present, but I wanted you to know how complicated this is. I went out there and looked at this building, at least I think it's a building, and he has built a house. And, you know, I don't want the council to take it lightly, and maybe you might want to go out there and look to see so that if you decide to tear it down, it's going to be torn down.
And, and I'm trying to think of the most polite way to express that confusion seems to be a constant in this. Every time I hear from the applicant here, I get a slightly different story and/or a different set of circumstances that I get from whoever the other party is. And this is a really helpful timeline because otherwise it's really hard to describe this. I mean, this has been going on for a number of months now and, I mean, it is, each time I get a phone call about it, totally different stuff. I mean, it's hard to follow. So I would, I would echo the sentiments of the clerks to say, this isn't a cut and dry, easy to understand. Try to drive by and see what you're looking for.
Councilman Jenkins, you...
Well, no, I would say that this did happen in my district four years ago to my next-door neighbor two doors over, and we required them to remove the top floor of the building after it was already complete. So that is not unique to this district. This is a similar issue we've had in the past. Now, of course, that took five years in court to resolve, but I'm well aware of some of those.
Yeah, I was just curious, and I think I have the answer to this based off the timeline. Because he applied for a driveway permit, has there ever been an inspection of the concrete work to even know if the slab is built and approved to support a two-story structure?
That's a good question, and I would have to defer to Eric to properly answer that because he's been involved in this saga with this whole institution.
It's the only inspection that we have of the foundations.
And so the slab, the building slab actually is substantial for what he's built on it here.
I'd say that it was approved for, you know, for a single-story garage according to our permit position. So now he's got a two-story structure on it, so it's not, it may or may not be.
Thank you. And Councilman Bradford?
Yes. Sweeney? If he was there, he was out of compliance in his continual construction and you asked him to cease. We have no, we have no, no provisions to execute him cease construction.
Well, you know, there's, there's certain things we can take people to court over in terms of that they're in violation of the zoning violation, but once you submit an application for ZBA, all the processes stop until they go through ZBA. So he did do that. It's just that if you go back, and it's more of a situation, if you go back in time, we actually have pictures of the house where he was told that he was not in compliance and even after that he's still constructed it. But as far as taking action against him, once he made ZBA application, we had to stop and let him go through that process. But in spite of that, I, it appears as though he continued construction. So either he was greatly optimistic he was going to get a variance and get what he wanted or he just simply took the risk of building something. Because anytime someone continues building, they take the risk of having to spend the money of deconstructing or tearing it down. And we don't normally face that situation very often, but this is a classic example right here. But really, to answer your question, I don't know that I have a tool in my toolbox that keeps someone from, from continuing construction unless the city has a tool that he can use. I don't have a tool that stops anyone.
We'll, we'll get that information from him tomorrow.
Sure. And I'll try not to go into great, as great...
I think you're right. I want to hear from him.
Okay, sure.
Give us some explanation of what is... Can I add one general question?
Sure.
The gentleman that issued the permit, was he just a loser?
Well, no, because the permit that was actually issued by the city permit office was for a garage. And instead, Mr. Rome took, as he was saying, if someone to give him an inch, they'll take a mile. He took it and added on and began to make it something that it wasn't.
Thank you, Claire. That makes sense. Okay, anybody else?
He missed two. He missed two of your meetings. This will be a...
I wouldn't bet my life on it.
Although, although I wouldn't be surprised if everyone on this council gets two or three phone calls up from him in the next day and/or two or three people he's asked to call you.
So you bet me you would.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll say as familiar I am because of the number of times I've spoken with them, that doesn't mean I'm clear. Because like I say, I mean, each time I talk, it's a little more, another detail is mentioned or another aspect is brought up, and it just confuses my understanding of it. And so it is, it is a multi-layered situation.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, let's move on to, any reports, motions, boards, and committees?
Chairman, I don't have a report. I have a date that I would like to hold on. Small Mary's business task force, I haven't, I haven't confirmed my council member, but I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to tend to reset to use the August 21st to, to the council conference room. To use the 21st to be in the conference.
What do you think is that?
Oh, we're right.
Any other committees to report? And that brings us to the clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the mayor's office has been very busy. We have a number of appointments for the Historic Preservation Commission, Dr. Francis Conley and Mr. Slattery Johnson, the personnel board, Dr. Adrian Critcher and Mr. Al, Ben Almore, the housing authority, Mrs. Judy Madison. You also have Sandy Semenow, but I understand that she, her name is to be removed because she has a conflict. We have for the municipal fire, police, civil services, Mr. Harold Sater, property standards board, Mr. Robert Blunt, Tree Memorial Library Board, Mrs. Julia Gahigan, Shreveport Airport Authority, Mr. Grant Knuckles, the zoning board of appeals, Mr. Marshall Farrell and Mr. Gerwood Hendricks and Ms. Cynthia Pearson.
Okay, I could, if the council would allow the chair, I'd like to recognize a new friend, Mr. Superman, Robert Superman Blunt, who I met not long ago. He promised me faithfully that he was going to whip Senator, I mean, Councilman Bradford into shape. Come forward and begin your process. Please state your name and your address.
Robert Superman Blunt, 1063 Sheridan Street, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Okay, anyone have a, we're so glad you're willing to serve and thank you for doing that. Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate you doing that. Mr. Moore? Mr. Almore?
Good afternoon.
Thank you also for willing to serve.
Thank you. Almore, 3711 Cressby Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana.
Any questions?
Mr. Moore can be on television tomorrow at least against everything squared away.
We will have a meeting up live.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see who else we, Mr. Gerwood Hendricks? Good afternoon, Gerwood.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you for being willing to serve the city.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
District E constituents.
Yes, District E constituents. Sure is. Thank you very much, Mr. Sir. Okay, let's see if I have, Mr. Johnson? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you for being willing to serve the city.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I have to.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Conley? Would you please come forward?
Sir, of course.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being willing to serve the city.
It is my absolute pleasure.
Okay, any questions from the council? Thank you very much. Dr. Prue?
Hello?
Thank you for being willing to serve the city.
Thank you.
Oh, good work. Any questions from personnel board? Okay, thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Sater? Ms. Gahigan? Ms. Julia, Ms. Gahigan? And good afternoon to you. Thank you for being willing to serve the city.
Thank you very much.
Memorial Library Board, any questions? Thank you kindly. Mr. Grant Knuckles?
He's uptown.
Okay. Mr. Marshall Farrell? And Ms. Pearson? Good afternoon. Come forward. Ms. Pearson, thank you for being willing to serve the city in the zoning board of appeals. Are there any questions?
I don't.
Thank you again, the council. Are there, I think I've several, any other decisions for the council?
See, just one thing quickly, if I could meet with Barbara and I guess Robert, if he's still here.
He's here.
About a specific issue about a sidewalk in Water and Sewer.
Mayor?
I'm just going to say, Mr. Sater is on his way, he got caught in traffic. He just told Ms. Bradford, but I did want to thank these people, you know, for agreeing to serve the city free of charge. to serve in our city free of charge on all these boards and commissions. We had a number of people, and we got a good group, a very diverse group, and too bad some of those others are not here, so you can see the diversity, men, women, white, black, you know, uh, different races. But we wanted to make sure that we were, um, putting in people that were committed. We did vet each of these people, but we had a number of boards and commissions that had not had, um, people replacing those who had either moved away, some had, um, some expired, others' terms had actually expired, and they had just been in these places, and some had written letters of resignations, and so we're just trying to make sure that we can get these boards operating so that we can have a better city.
Thank you.
But I did wanna, um, thank you all for looking at the confirmations for the appointments that we're trying to make to get these boards very active and involved in the community.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
No, no further bids, this, this, this.
Uh, we are gonna remove Ms. Seminow, is that correct?
We, we did. Ms. Seminow called us just today. We met with her about two, two and a half weeks ago, and she was good at that time, but today, for some reason.
We'll take her name off.
I'm sorry?
We'll take her name off.
We will, and we will find a replacement for her.
Okay, any additional communications from the council?
Uh, I have a community town hall meeting on Thursday at 6:00 at Airport Park. We are welcome, fellow council members, to, um, come help me out.
Any others? The, Mayor, if you have any additional.
I'll probably say this again tomorrow, but I do want to say to the city council members that on March 31st, the Governor's Recovery Task Force will be meeting here in our city, and certainly I'd like to invite each of you, if you will look at your calendars, this is the first time we've had, that statewide meeting, I've been running back and forth, meeting with them in South Louisiana, even in West Monroe, but this time, they asked to come to Shreveport, so we're gonna be hosting that from like 9:30 until noon, March 31st. And if your calendars will allow you to, it would be wonderful. We've asked people from Homeland Security Parish, from Boja Parish, City of Shreveport, they will present, um, damage that was, that we incurred during the March 2016 flooding. And so, I think it's gonna be a unique opportunity for people, if they want to speak to the Recovery Task Force, there will be opportunity for you to do that toward the end of the meeting. They do take public comments because it is a public meeting, but it will be streamed live statewide, so just want to tell you that today, and I may mention it again tomorrow, just so that our citizens will know about it. Thank you.
Yeah, if, 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 I make mayor, if I could ask just to, uh, Ms. Bradford to give us a plug on, I think this week, the AKAs will be coming in?
Yes.
And so, I just, I know you're a former regional director, so if you don't mind, if you could just come and kind of tell us, because Councilwoman Blair is gonna lose this line with all these nice-looking ladies, over 3,000, it'd be.
And that's, and that's on my announcement tomorrow.
Okay. You might need a little help. You might let you know at that.
And in fact, it's almost 4,000.
4,000.
Yeah.
Coming in over 3,000. She'll, she'll, she'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let, let me point out that the IT department, the city mayor, has worked in like 2:00 AM this morning trying to get all of these bugs worked out of our new, uh, system. You noticed that screen there, I cleared. Susan, Susan, wave your hand at us. She finally can hear us. She acknowledged today that it's her first time in a long time she can understand the council. So, that's a great improvement, and I want to extend our appreciation to the IT group that worked so hard to get everything up and running. All the bugs are not out of it, but they're getting close. So, thank you to all of you in the IT department who really worked hard. Is there anything else? This council meeting is adjourned.